I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Community development director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have noncitizens comments on agenda-related items limited to five minutes.
This is Lasky, 537 Forest Street, and I'm just asking for your consideration for Laney Rosca and myself to be reappointed to the Parks Commission for another term. I feel that the parks are, right now, doing amazing things. We've had, we work well with this, I feel, with the city, with the DPW, and with each other. And we've got an amazing commission and right in the midst of some major projects. And if possible, I'd like to see our group stay together and see these to completion. And in the same tone, we have that Parks tour, the annual tour that's in our bylaws. It's scheduled for June 20th at 5:00. And we're going to start at First Street Beach, and then we'll end there. But if you drive to First Street Beach, if you'd like to join us on the dial-a-right, whoever's on the Parks Commission, that's already scheduled. So we'd love to have City Council go. And if you haven't taken a drive through the parks, and at night, it, I've been doing that on a regular basis. These parks, they look great right now, and they are being utilized. Uh, you see that Duffy the other night had soccer going, they had basketball going. They had kids on the swings. It was like, this is amazing. And all the parks just seem to be really alive and utilized this year. And I think, you know, they've been well-maintained, they look good, they're ready for business. So, and I'll tell you one last story. Uh, the neighbors have appreciated Morton Park. And there's a full basketball court down there, there's new playground equipment down there. You know, picnic table shade structure, it looks like a real park. So the neighbors keep their eye on it. The one lady across the street said, "It's 4:00 AM, I'm letting my dog out to go to the bathroom, and I see two cars pull up." And she goes, "Oh, my gosh, a drug deal going down in the park," which has happened before. And she said, "I'm watching," going, "Oh." And she says, "The next thing, out of those two cars come groups of men with basketballs." And she says, "I don't know if they were shift workers or what, but for over an hour, they played basketball at 4:00 AM." She said, "It didn't bother us. I heard the balls bouncing, and it was such a good noise." Anyways, just, I thank you for considering and for your support of the parks.
Thank you.
And for Laney, too. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Sammy Lucas-Gobetz. I'm the executive director of Manistee Tourism. I want to thank you for your consideration of the resolution to name M-55 an outdoor recreation byway. We don't technically need your approval, but it's a nice courtesy because you're within two miles of the road to be able to have that. I'm working with all the visitors bureaus from Manistee Township, all the way to Towis, to name the road a recreation byway. It's a really long process where every village, township, city along M-55 has to approve it. If one village says no, then the whole thing goes away. But essentially, it allows us to do some extra promotion. We get to bring a spotlight to all the outdoor recreation assets in the area. And I think Manistee County has the best section of M-55. And so again, I really appreciate the consideration. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, consideration of ordinance 24-07 to amend Chapter 260 Oil and Gas Investment Board of the City of Manistee, Michigan, codified ordinances, consideration of a resolution of support for naming M-55 as Coast to Coast on M-55 as Pure Michigan recreational byway, consideration of resolution for Good Stuff Holdings LLC, 308 River Street On-Premises Tasting Room, consideration of Manistee High School Homecoming Parade. At this time, council will take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of adopting council policy CP-40 Anti-Fraud. The city's auditors recommended that the city adopt a anti-fraud policy as part of the fiscal year 2023 audit. Administration has reviewed the best practices and sample policies in the area and drafted an anti-fraud policy for council's consideration. It also has been reviewed by the city attorney. At this time, council will take action to adopt council policy CP-40 Anti-Fraud. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is there?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Is there on this anti-fraud now, is it, uh, should we read it, anything? Or, I mean, we didn't read it, the vote on it, so I don't know.
Um, so it's a council policy. It's just kind of setting up a procedure to investigate fraud allegations. And there's a procedure, even if the city manager is identified, um, the police chief would then conduct an investigation with some potentially outside firms. So it's really just a best practice to adopt so that there's a procedure for something like this.
This will be distributed to all employees. They'll get their own copy, or they're supposed to, they're either going to find it someplace?
Um, it's in our council policy manual, but I think, yeah, we'll distribute it to department heads.
Policy issued, and they should acknowledge that they've understood it and read it and sign off on it would be appropriate, I think.
Yeah, I'll distribute it to department heads. Yep. Thank you.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of entering into agreements with Top Line Electric LLC to serve as the city's electrical contractor of record and automation controls contractor of record for five-year, five-year terms. The city selected Top Line Electric as its electrical contractor of record and automation controls contractor of record through a competitive process in 2018. Contracts expire June 30th, 2023, and the city has been working on a month-to-month basis since then. The DPW and Water and Sewer Utility, as well as all municipal buildings, use electrical contractor services. Water and Sewer Utilities use control services for its plant automation and has been happy with the quality and cost of the services. The public works director, water lead man, wastewater lead man, and facility manager all recommend entering into a five-year agreement for the electrical and automation controls contractor of record with Top Line Electric LLC. At this time, council will take action to enter into a five-year agreement with Top Line Electric LLC to serve as the city's electrical contractor of record and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute these agreements. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
How come we lost a year on this, that three?
Um, I think there, well, we did change the HVAC contractor of record. We looked at, um, different firms because we felt like we could potentially get a better firm elsewhere. Um, this was one where, you know, we were thinking about changing, but Top Line was ultimately one that people wanted to stay with. So, um, agreed it could have been done sooner, but, um, we would like to continue with them.
Question on those, no? Okay. Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. At this time, council will take action to enter into a five-year agreement with Top Line Electric LLC to serve as the city's automation controls contractor of record and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
Um, a motion. A second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a budget amendment 2024-2 for fiscal year and June 30th, 2024. The City of Manistee is required by state law to ensure that actual expenditures do not exceed budgeted amounts. Over the course of the current fiscal year, paid and unbudgeted events and/or see, and/or council-approved expenditures have occurred. The proposed budget amendment addresses the expenditures associated with these events to ensure compliance with the state statutes regarding appropriations. At this time, council will take action to adopt budget amendments 2024-2 for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just a couple of things. $31,000 more appropriations for repairs and maintenance, where's that going? And who's collecting the tuition reimbursement? I'm curious. What department?
So a couple of things on the building maintenance. So we had a final payment for the contractor for the city hall water damage. So that's going to be reimbursed in the insurance. We also did have that $19,500 payment for the steps. Um, and then when we had the new HVAC contractor of record, Hearst Mechanical, they, we had them look over the system and make some improvements, um, to the city hall system. So the new controls and things like that.
And the tuition, where's that going?
Um, so that was for recruits, so that's, that's being collected and paying for the, it's reimbursing for those, uh, new recruit training.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question. Jeff? Did you have a question? Okay. Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, letter of support to commence designing a lane reduction for the 2027 U.S. 31 Reconstruction Project. MDOT is beginning the design phase of the 2027 U.S. 31 Reconstruction Project through the City of Manistee. MDOT presented the results of a recent safety audit to the council on May 7th, 2024. Before MDOT commits significant staff time to including the lane reductions to improve safety, they are requesting a letter of support from the city. At this time, council could take action to approve MDOT, MDOT's letter of support to evaluate a lane reduction for the 2027 U.S. 31 Reconstruction Project. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacant seats on the Board of Review, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Compensation Commission, Downtown Development Authority, Oil and Gas Investment Board, PEG Commission, Parks Commission, Tree Commission, and Zoning Boards of Appeals. Mayor and manager appointment require a second, motion second, and council voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations made, council votes on the not, until one nominee receives a majority. The following applications have been received. Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, two vacancies, terms ending 6/30/27. Proposed promote revitalization of environmentally distressed and functionally obsolete areas. I would like to appoint Megan Kemp at 1725 Murky Road for the appointment ending in 6/30/27. Is there a motion?
I will make that motion. Support.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Downtown Development Authority, two vacancies, interest members, terms ending 6/30/28. Purpose Central Business District and tax increment financing authority, Mr. Campbell.
Um, I'd like to nominate or appoint Deanna Marsh for the first term expiring 6/30/28.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Heather, would you please take role?
Who was the support on that? I'm sorry.
Seth.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
I'd like to nominate Cal Mosher for the second interest member spot.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Oil and Gas Investment Board, one vacancy, term ending 6/30/28. Purpose Overseas Investment of Oil and Gas Trust Fund. I would like to nominate Doug Parks, 724 Harbor Drive, for the term ending 6/30/28. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Parks Commission, two vacancies, terms ending 6/30/27. Purpose Advisory of, on Parks Development, Maintenance, Improvements, and Identifying Planning Implementing Public and Private Beautification Projects. Uh, we have three nominees, Mark Tomajewski, 106 Tammerack Street, Laney Rosca, 1507 Vine Street, Elizabeth Lasky, 537 Forest Street. I would like to appoint Elizabeth Lasky, 537 Forest Street, to the term ending 6/30/27. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. I'd also like to appoint Laney Rosca, 1507 Vine Street, for the term ending 6/30/27. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Zoning Board of Appeals, one vacancy, alternate member, term ending 5/31/27. Purpose here's deals to zoning business issues. I would like to appoint Dan Dilworth, 464 Third Street, for the, the term ending 5/31/27. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now we will have a report from our engineer of record, Mr. Sean Milton. Are you guys doing your report together? Is your report together?
With, uh, DPW.
Yeah.
I think Jeff's just going to go ahead and be heard for me.
Okay.
All right, well, good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmen, Councilwomen. Um, we're here to present our annual update on the engineer of record. Um, I think this is the 11th time I've done this presentation. Um, tonight, we'll try and be brief for a couple of reasons. One, it's a nice night out, and two, I may have a little bit of cough, so I'm going to try and get through my part quickly and turn it over to Lucas. I'm going to go kind of big picture a little bit about our office and our people, and then, uh, hit on our projects, and then Lucas is going to talk about some of the projects we currently have going and will have going next year. So our Manistee office is kind of continuing to grow. We have 12 people that are working on a regular basis in the office. Um, those 12 people are either city residents or from the region. We've got, we've been really lucky to get some very talented people working with us. Um, we have actually a couple of them up here tonight. Shane Brennan is a project manager out of our Manistee office. Annie Bentley is a project coordinator. And then Lucas will be presenting a little bit, is also a project manager. And we're also lucky to have four, uh, young interns working for us in our engineering and surveying department, so it's, it's nice to have some young blood in the office. Uh, with, with all these people, we're at about 16, and if, if you've been in our office, it's a little tight. So we've been going through some work on get expanding. We've got the entire building now we lease out, and, uh, we're adding better conference space, uh, more workstations, and some better restrooms. Oops, wrong way. So in addition to our Manistee office, uh, we do have a lot of support. We've got 10 offices located through the state of Michigan. We have 350 employees Spicer Group has on staff. So we have a lot of very highly technical people and experts, and we leverage on them a lot. A lot of the people, the names and faces you see on this slide spend a fair amount of time up here in Manistee. They'll come up for several days, work on a lot of the projects that you're familiar with. And, uh, we're kind of lucky to have that support. We're, you're probably aware of this, but we're a full-service, uh, company. We do all kinds of things related to municipal services. Uh, pretty much, we're comfortable doing, uh, anything that's asked for us on a municipal basis. If we can't do it, we'll sub-cconsult, or we'll, we'll team with somebody. But we have mechanical engineers, civil engineers, electrical engineers, architects, planners, surveyors, um, GIS specialists, uh, kind of all working in a variety of capacities throughout the state and out of our office. I think I've said this before, but our company's really big on supporting the communities we work in. Uh, that's at a corporate basis, but we, we follow through that locally the best we can. Uh, when asked to support, we, we do the best we can to support both financially and through volunteering. This, over the last year, some of the different groups we've worked with were either volunteering or supporting financially. So project-wise, and I, I clearly will not go through all these, but, um, this is since last July, since I gave the last report. This is a pretty good snapshot of projects we're working on. And some are, you know, very small, brief projects. We might spend a couple hours, you know, helping city staff out with. And some are on the other end of the spectrum, where literally we work on them all year to design, bid, um, and then construct. Again, I'm not going to go through these. Uh, Lucas will be spending some time on some of the construction projects is usually what most people are interested in. Grant assistance in addition to the projects, you know, we like to work at helping the city find funding. Uh, there's limited dollars for our projects, so we really try and enlarge those in a lot of different ways. But, uh, grants being, you know, the best way because it's a, you know, given amount of money from an agency. Since we came on board, we're pushing close to $6 million in grants to help a variety of different projects. We're currently pursuing some additional grants. Uh, and then outside of grants, uh, we do look at low-interest loans and other ways to leverage. Uh, probably the greatest example, that would be the rural development loan we did for the clean water recovery facility to eliminate, uh, CSOs or SSOs into Manistee Lake. Uh, and today, it kind of paid off because today we would have had a sanitary sewer overflow, and we captured it and treated it. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lucas to talk about some construction projects. If you have any questions at the end, I'd be happy to answer them.
Good evening. Um, as Sean said, I'm here to present on the construction projects for this year and, uh, next year. So as you see on the slide here, a map of the City of Manistee. All of the projects in blue, um, are representing the projects that are happening in 2024. So that's a lot of the, the map that you see right now. Um, and then the red is representing the projects that we're currently designing um, or about to design for construction in 2025. Um, as we move towards, uh, the end of this year, into the winter, into the design season, um, a lot more projects will pop up on that map for construction in 2025, especially since the recent budget, um, got approved. Um, but right now, this is a snapshot of, of kind of what we're working on for construction right now. Um, so the, the only project so far that we've, uh, completed in 2024, I know it's June, um, but we completed the Fifth Avenue Millenfill and Rehab project um, and the Fifth Avenue parking lot improvement project. And in my opinion, that parking lot needed a serious upgrade, and I think, uh, the city got that. Um, it is really, really nice out there now, and, um, not, not everybody realized how bad that pavement actually was. Um, and a lot of it, as Jeff has mentioned several times, uh, was creeping into the beach. Um, so hopefully, this'll, this'll prevent that from happening. Um, the project right now, um, actually, myself and, um, some volunteers from Spicer and the NRBC, um, started planting the city entrance signs with dune grass, uh, this week. Um, so you probably saw that driving around town. Um, city DPW has helped with, uh, getting the materials out there for, um, planting the dune grass and then grading some of the topsoil for the next plants that are going to be coming within the next week or so. Um, and we'll plant those in front and behind the sign. So that project's also a, a nice highlight to the, the community. Um, so going back to the map of all the, the city projects here, um, I'll touch on the, the upcoming 2024 projects, um, briefly. Um, the first one, I tried to make these chronological here. Uh, the first one that's going to happen is the Eighth Street Rehab Project, which is going to occur from Tammerack Street all the way down to Vine. So it's a, a pretty substantial part of town. Um, it's a microsurface project to rehabilitate the pavement, so that way it doesn't continue to deteriorate. Um, that project's supposed to happen within the next couple of weeks. Um, so you'll see that, and there'll be some, some traffic control happening for that project. Uh, one thing we haven't heard back from the contractor on the Sixth Street project for schedule. Um, that project should be happening pretty soon, but that's a crushing shape for the, the road right in front of the Kennedy School. That should be happening sometime soon, and I think the completion is in August. Um, the Sands Park Site Improvement, um, project, which includes a demolition and sidewalk improvement that is kind of getting talked about with city staff, and I think council still, um, so that might come up on a future agenda. But that's possibly happening this summer. Um, the first and Maple Street intersection, uh, improvements, I'm sure everybody's waiting for that one to get done. We've kind of pushed that a lot because of the U.S. 31 Bridge, um, project. But as of right now, as of today, it's slated to happen in July. Um, the EDA Riverwalk Repair and Improvements Project, um, they had a pre-bid meeting for that today. Um, and is planned to happen sometime in July, August, throughout the fall. Um, so really big project as well. Uh, the Spruce Street, uh, Waterman and First Street Relief Sewer are kind of packaged up together, and, um, we are actually bidding that project right now. Um, going to get bids on Thursday, and that'll come to council for approval on June 18th. Um, the Digestor Cover Replacement Project, um, that project's currently being manufactured right now. And then once we have all the materials, they'll install that later this summer to put the cover on. Uh, fire station improvements, um, I know a lot of city staff and the fire chief included are, are working on a lot of pieces, moving pieces of that project. moving pieces of that project that's been long coming and should happen within the next month to start on that project, which is really awesome. Lincoln Street Improvements, we got a category B grant, if you remember, for that project, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is amazing because that, that project is, that road isn't really bad shape. We got a really good bid. That project's agreement will come to council also on June eighteenth and that's slated to happen after July through the late summer and fall. And then lastly, the U S thirty-one cured in place pipelining. There's a few deteriorated concrete pipes underneath the highway that city staff wants to rehabilitate before we have the highway under construction to just make sure everything's as good as we can get it before that happens. So off of construction now, another thing that I guess Spicer works day to day with the city on is G I S maps. The city has a crazy amount of layers and data that we help maintain for the infrastructure and asset management that will help future generations know where everything is. And we maintain all fifty-plus layers and tens of thousands of data points on a day-to-day basis. We help the city with lead and copper rule investigation stuff. That's, there's some mandates coming up later this year that we're going to have to prioritize soon. And then most recently, we've flew the whole city with an aerial drone and generated this new twenty-two-four aerial, which is extremely useful for planning. We can zoom into pretty much any crack in the road, which is really nice to plan for a lot of different things. And then we also generated this work order system for city staff. So it's sort of like C Click Fix for the public, but work orders for city staff, if there's something wrong with our maps or our records. So that way they don't get forgotten. We put in a worker, work order and then that way it's documented and we can get it done and track that change. So some future priorities, some of this stuff is pretty repetitive. We've talked about this in the past years, but just to touch on it briefly, you know, supporting the city with the transportation improvement plan, maintaining the G I S like I was just talking about. We do want to continue to prioritize and ensure that our record keeping for construction projects is, is done to a really good quality. We've noticed that in years past, you know, a hundred years ago, there was not very good records, which makes our job a lot harder now. So we definitely prioritize that for the city. And then we've noticed on recent projects, we keep getting one or two contractors to bid on projects. And so we, we try our best to reach out to as many as we can to, to get the best bids that we can get for the city. And then just identifying any resources for asset capital improvement upgrades and grants. So that's pretty much it for our presentation and leave it open for any questions for Sean and I.
I just had a comment. I just wanted to thank Spicer for their work with the Fifth Street Beach Project and just the beach management thing. A lot of positive comments from community members that were able to attend those meetings, sitting on the committee that had the kind of planning. The streamline of services and planning is just really impressive. So thank you.
Same thing. I don't think we could be in better hands. I really don't. All that you guys do and all the stuff you're covering, N R B C and stuff, we could not be in better hands. So thank you for all that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
We will have a report from the D P W Director, Mr. McGowan.
Evening. First of all, I would, I have to agree with you. I appreciate you approving the contract with Typline and working with vendors of record like Spicer. When we've got a good firm that's committed to the community, willing to work with us, we're willing to head in the direction that, that you guys, you know, send us in. It just makes our jobs a lot easier and I think, I think we've done a lot of good stuff together. So same format as we use and some updated pictures, a little bit of updated information. But what is Public Works of Manistee? I actually get asked that quite a bit. And I jokingly say that if it's not on fire and it's not illegal, it's probably public works. We cover a lot of different things in the community, including all the utilities, fleet maintenance, parks, refus, streets, and the city marina. So who is the Public Works? Myself and Katie, the D P W clerk and our marina manager. We also have five part-time staff members at the city marina. We have seven full-time employees in the utilities department. We have three full-time employees in the parks department and eleven part-time employees in the parks. And then twelve full-time people in the street department that also, that includes the mechanic and the welder fabricator. I want to say this upfront so I don't forget. You guys approved funding the third parks position. We started the process of fulfilling that position back in May of twenty-twenty-three. We had internal people sign for those postings and then we had to post their positions. And then people signed their positions and we had to post those. Then we had a retirement with Rick Moore and then Mickey McCann left for a different job. So we had, I think it was ten different employees bounce to about thirteen, fourteen different positions. In the end, we hired four new employees and have been very lucky that we've been able to hire some very talented people that have actually brought additional expertise and, and experience to our group. So, but without the support of council funding those positions, you know, we couldn't, couldn't make that happen. And, and I hope people are starting to see. We didn't have those positions all full until September. So really this spring is the first time that, that we're in earnest trying to get more done. And personally, I think it's working. I hope you guys notice that too. The administration, which is kind of basically two of us, we field hundreds and hundreds of phone calls and email inquiries and, and questions and stuff. Katie does a tremendous job doing that. We manage a lot of different budgets within the, within the city. We work with M Dot Eagle. Brandon heads up our response to the C Click Fix and is involved with that on a daily basis. You've seen our budgets. You can imagine all the purchasing and, and planning and stuff that we do, working with the various departments on developments and different projects. And, you know, all those projects that Spicer listed, obviously we're a part of every one of those. Maybe not the fire department as much, but, but we're, we're working with those guys literally on a daily basis. And it's not just myself, it's a lot of our staff. Proud to announce that for the second year in a row, we received an American Public Works Association Project of the Year Award for, for our category. This year it was for our Clean Water Recovery Facility. So it was quite an honor to receive that up at the annual conference a week and a half ago. The street department obviously maintains all of the city streets and sidewalks. We're responsible for winter maintenance, all the road maintenance, sidewalks, all the parking lots within the community, all the forestry work that's trimming trees, that's cutting trees down, that's picking up brush on Fridays. Our maintenance agreement with U S thirty-one, that includes patching and sweeping and cleaning and plowing. Our bridge operations, both under contract with M Dot for U S thirty-one and then the operation of the Maple Street Bridge. But then also all the inspections and studies and we work with Spicer and State of Michigan and Federal Highway on those, make sure that that bridge is safe and meets all requirements. And we do a lot of festival support. Almost every festival that you request or that comes before you for a special event request, there's always stuff that we're doing to help set those up and get them equipment and so forth. And then we're always there the day after to clean it up and like surf program, try to make it look like it never really happened. So. Some of these will be a little bit redundant, but I'm pretty proud of the paving work at, not just the parking lot at Fifth Avenue, but we did some upgrades to the section in front of the Coast Guard Station. We support all the, when I talk about sidewalks, we do a lot of concrete work in-house. We also contract with a proprietary company that does the sidewalk saw cutting. We actually did, we do normally do those in the fall, the sidewalk cutting. We did them in the fall and I recognize that we had some additional funding, so we did another round of that in the spring. And then they're already planning for the, the next round later this summer with the new budget taking effect. We do crack sealing. We do that in-house and it saves a lot of money over contracting that out. We've talked about the signals at First Street and as you recall, that's something we had planned and programmed already. And then council suggested that we upgrade the pedestrian signals as well, so we were able to put that all together. Leaf haul's been a big thing, but quite frankly, it is a big thing. It's five or six weeks in the fall and it's a tremendous amount of material that we haul away and turn into compost. And then working with the Tree Commission this year, they were able to secure the designation of Tree City USA, which we haven't had for quite a few years. And the reason why we didn't have it in the past is because the investment that we make, they break it down per, per capita for resident. And we just weren't meeting those, those investment amounts in the forestry work. So the Tree Commission rolled their sleeves up and have advertised it a lot. And we went from an average of planting twenty trees a year to over forty trees a year. So tremendous work on that part. Just a couple of pictures. When, when we can't replace this or fix the sidewalk or trip hazards with the saw cutting, we do full removal and replacement and we do that in-house. So we save the labor cost on that over contracting. The picture on the right is the Morton Basketball Courts. That's probably the biggest concrete pour we've done in-house since I've been here. But one of our new hires used to own a concrete company, so he led the team. We all learned a little bit more and, and our capabilities are expanded. I talk about this every year, but I think it's very important because when we go to other conferences and talk to other communities, we're doing a very proactive job of trying to make the city, the city streets and sidewalks safe during the winter, but also using whatever technology and techniques that we can to save money. Because whatever dollar we save on that work, we could put back into repaving and reconstruction and we're still providing the desired level of service. When we get to fleet maintenance, that is just an enormous job and an enormous responsibility that really falls on the shoulders of one person, Jeremy Randall. And he does a fantastic job keeping things moving. That's what was actually the fourth mower that came in today. That picture was taken this morning and he'd repair them, fix them, get them back out, bring in the next one. It's kind of a revolving door. But we've got over sixty-five pieces of equipment and vehicles that we maintain and keep running. We have, since, since the day I started with the city, Ed Bradford said, we've got to get a handle on this motor pool. We've got to forecast out how long these, these pieces of equipment are going to last. How do we, you know, push them out as far as we can? How do we make the motor pool cash flow? And so we've been working hard to do that and I think it's paying off. When we're not repairing and fixing things, we go through preventative maintenance and almost every one of those pieces of equipment are changed from season to season. So, you know, quarterly, everything's getting, one thing's putting, going away, the other thing's being prepared for use. I wanted to put on purchase challenges. We have finally caught up with all the COVID delays on buying mowers and tractors and everything. We have caught up. We have two pickup trucks that we've deferred for three, at least three years. Those are ordered. They should be coming anytime. So with, once we receive those, we have caught up on all of our deferred stuff and then we'll be coming before you with everything that was approved in the upcoming budget. Chief Glass and I work because we have the most vehicles that, that get taken out of service. What we've done in the past is we've waited two, three years until we had enough vehicles to host an auction on site. And it's turned out pretty well. We've had good success with that. But the more we talk with other communities and so forth, we're finding that everything's online now. And so the big companies are simply, hey, a police car just came out of service last week. They'll come take a picture of it, do a write-up of it, and it goes into their monthly auction. And so I think we're going to move in that direction. I think it'll help retain the value of whatever's left of those vehicles so we can get, cash that out sooner. But it also takes up a lot of that, or frees up a lot of that stored space that's in the yard and takes away some of that clutter. So we'll be moving forward with that very soon. Tanner Liston, our welder fabricator, is just a tremendous, tremendously gifted young man. And this is just the latest creation. The Chamber Leadership Group said, you know, can you bring us water into the, the new dog park when we renovate it? Well, the first thing that we talked about was, sure, we can run a water line in there. We'll put a frost-free spigot in there. And then we started talking internally and saying, let's do something cool. Like, how do we do something cool? When we went online, everything we found that, that functioned something like this was five, six grand. The guys built this themselves. We just, I gave them a sketch and said, here's an idea. They put it together. They built it in a couple of days and I think it's, it's pretty cool. And just about every year, we bring a picture of some of the neat stuff that the guys have done. The Parks Department, I've talked about that a little bit. There's fifteen city parks that we perform all the maintenance daily, weekly, monthly, seasonally on. There's dining public restrooms that have to be serviced and cleaned. And, and we work with the police to try to reduce the amount of vandalism occurs, but it's just a continuous battle. We set up the ice rink, ice rink in the wintertime and pray Mother Nature cooperates with us. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, isn't quite as successful. But when you see people out there skating on the weekends and the evenings, it's, to me, it's worth the effort. We obviously clean the beaches twice a week. We're working with all kinds of different volunteer groups, individuals, organizations as they're trying to help support the community. And I will tell you, the last year or this current budget, you've put, you've given money for volunteer support so that we can buy equipment and materials and stuff to match what they want to do. That's made it really easy for us to work with them and say yes, because it doesn't take away from some of the things that, that we need to do out of our operating budgets. And then we support other groups like the D D A Maintenance. That's actually a very large item of work that we do and then projects like Blossom Boulevard and, and other festival supports. These are pictures of the Morton Park improvements. The one on the left was the community build. If you haven't ever done that, participate in a community build. It's a lot of fun. And, and you get a lot out of it, but we save tens of thousands of dollars from paying a, you know, the contractor to come in and set that stuff up. And a lot of the work we can physically do within the D P W, but when you're doing playground equipment, if you're not certified, they won't allow you to, they won't allow you to install it and won't sell it to you. So you have to have them on site when you build a lot of that playground equipment. To me, this is the most economic way and it gets buy-in from the community. And with the completion of the basketball court, we're done with that playground project in the, the Community Foundation Grant. So we'll be working on closing that out. The Beach Master Plans, we had open houses this past Saturday, Fifth Avenue in the morning and First Street at, in the afternoon. There were a lot of members of the Community Foundation staff and board members that came and participated. And, and all of them expressed how, how grateful they are that the city works with them on these projects and they're looking forward to the next round. So. Also, in part of those projects, we did upgrades at Duffy Park, namely the mirror go-around and the shade structure and some benches. And we upgraded the softball field. The seniors are loving that. And they're looking forward to what can we do next? What can we do next? So.
Kind of manure spreader out there, Jeff?
No, it's, it's actually, it's actually a different kind of stone dust. What they did is they took the stone dust that was there that would get really hard and compacted and it's hard on everybody, but let alone, you know, older knees like myself. This is a different type of material and it's a white material. It's lighter colored. You can see it underneath that machine. So they leveled out the, the field with it and then the stuff that's on top is the same material, but it's dyed red. So as it, as it rains, it actually will bleed through the other material and, but it's easier to, to keep aerated. It holds moisture better. And then we've also bought a, a small piece of equipment to call a nail rake to kind of scarify that on a monthly basis. So it's just great to see people using those facilities. Lucas mentioned the Fifth Avenue parking lot, but I could not be happier with the way that turned out. And I got to be honest with you, the day we pulled the barricades, it was like, okay, how are people going to react to this wall? Are they going to love it or hate it? I've heard almost entirely positive things about it, so I think that worked out very well and we appreciate council funding that, those projects. Here's another one that people may not notice, but Kelly Grevey actually brought it up to us a couple of years ago and said, man, those bollards down by the Lions Pavilion, all the, the, the paint is chipped off of them. Is there anything we can do? Well, we did some research and, and we found out, we, we took, had Top Line actually de, you know, take out the, the wiring on them. We pulled them out. We took them up to Traverse City, had them sandblasted and then had them repainted. They're all installed. And, you know, I think the Parks Commission would, would concur with me. It's those little detail things that we're starting to be able to get to that really, I think, make a difference. Refuse and recycling. Public Works is ultimately responsible for those. The household waste pickup is obviously contracted by Republic. And they also pick up our metal and plastic in our combing bin that's currently down at Manistee Catholic Central. We do yard waste collection every Tuesday. Didn't get through the town today, so if you see it out there, we'll be back tomorrow to finish that up. Fire Chief just asked me a little bit ago about the monthly bulk item pickup. It's a wonderful tool if you use it. The first pickup you have of the month, you can put out a bulky item and you don't have to haul it anywhere and there's no additional cost for that. And then every year we do a different type of recycling event with Republic. This year we did tires again. I think we did tires about six years ago. Six years ago, we filled up the whole semi trailer. This year we've filled up a little bit less than half. So we know that we've got a lot of those materials, a lot of people's yards. We can probably span that out a little bit more. But we've done, I think we've done mattresses, we've done e-waste, we did paper. We've done a variety of different things, but we want to hold an event that's specific to the community each year. So if you guys have any ideas on those, feel free to send them our way at any time. We also partnered up that day with the N R B C to do some bulk item stuff there to help people get just general refuse out of their yards. And that one is actually very successful this year. So. And then we make dirt. If you look at the stuff that's in the bucket on the left, that's, that's yard waste that's been composting for three to four years. It's still pretty nasty, quite frankly, but we put it through a screen and we take out all the debris, all the large material. And what comes out is on the right and it's a nice finished organic compost. We actually sell some of that to local landscaping contractors. That money goes back into the refuse fund and helps to offset the cost of running our refuse program. refuse program. And then we use it on various projects throughout the city. Utilities, the Water Department and Sanitary Sewer Department give separate presentations to council, so I won't go into a great bit of depth. But we pumped 325 million gallons of water last year, and that was about 40, almost 45 million more than the year before that. We had a dry summer, drought conditions, new development, all of that stuff adds up. We treated 404 million gallons of sewage last year, and the difference between what you pump in water and what we're treating in sewer is what leaches into the pipes through cracks and high groundwater. And then all those little illegal things that are getting into the sewer system and used to cause overflows, and like Sean said, that two inches of rain that we received this morning in a very short amount of time, it would have overloaded the plant and we would have had it discharged this morning. But instead, it's being pumped into the tanks, and when the guys left at the end of the day, there's two-foot burst tanks, so we got a lot of capacity yet behind that. And this is a picture on the left of a water main repair that we did, I believe that was on Fifth Street, Akaziosco and Fifth Street. And then we also repaired all the internal components to our primary settling tanks. I know when we come to you with, I think Councilman Bachman has said this before, we come to you with these big terms and these big dollar amounts, and what the heck are we doing? Well, that picture on the right-hand side are basically squeegees that go across the bottom, and they just kind of rotate around on a giant chain. You never see them until they break, and we had one that broke, so. And it could not be repaired any longer, so we spent the money and fixed both of the tanks this year. The Marina, there was a lot of improvements done to the Marina, we've completed some additional just a month or two ago. We're seeing the boater numbers increase. We're not at the end of the year, so I don't want to say it, but I'm pretty sure we're going to be profitable. And with that profit, we've also absorbed over $5,000 of furnace repairs that had to be made that were not, not planned for. We repainted the floors downtown, or down in the lower level at $6,000. We did that out of the operating budget, and I still think we're going to be profitable in the end of that. I think we've got 10 or 11 seasonals right now, so those numbers are coming up. And so, the Harbor Commission's been working hard to market that, and Katie's been working hard to kind of get that operation the best we can. But the facilities and all the investment that the communities, the volunteers, and our staff has done, I think, has made a huge difference. This is a project that we just completed two weeks ago. Jason Thompson Landscaping removed a lot of overgrown brush down at the west end by Spruce Street, and then all the woodwork was repaired by the Parks Department employees. I think it cleaned that up a lot. So with that, I would take any questions that you have, or if there's any other information I didn't present that you would want me to, let me know.
I've been first on record, I met you at the beginning of the meeting, I've been very pleased. You had your critics, but I think you shut some of them up this year. The figures good, parts are good. The little things that make a difference, the guys repaired that cement patch on 31, that's as smooth as could be. And I was expecting, it's smooth, so good job, and keep up the good work, and I'm certainly a happy council member this year.
Thank you.
As we forward with the Marina, with rental, because I noticed in the paper Sunday, they talked about every Marina is getting, so they're contracted out for 10 years in advance.
So, I think we have, by the numbers, we still have room for more seasonal slips there. And so, we're trying to market that a little bit more because that, that's just good fixed income for the Marina. But I think that the seasonals that we have this year are probably at the highest or close to the highest that we've, we've ever had. So I think we're trending in the right direction. And then we're seeing the slip rentals with the transients have been increasing as well.
Because they said that people are going out of state to have a place to put their boat, they didn't have any place. So that's quite interesting. Hey, what are we going to do with that Fifth Avenue, that water always sits in that driveway? We talked about this a couple of years ago. When it rains, just past Ford Street.
Oh.
People were complaining about their driveway being.
So, yeah, and actually, the mayor emailed us about that last week, I think it was. We've looked into that. In order to extend storm sewer to drain that area, right now, there's a catch basin there, but it leaches into the ground, so it, it takes time, and it goes very slow, and it's been like that for a number of years. In order for us to extend storm sewer, if we go towards the river, the pipe there in front of Century Terrace, and where Sixth Avenue already drains, is too small. So we would overload that and create more problems downstream. We really would need to take it either east, down Ford Street, I'm sorry, north down Ford Street, or west on Fifth Avenue where we've got a large 48-inch pipe that crosses, but there's a hill in between them, so. Wasn't it shown about 500?
The length, about 400 feet, I think.
No, about 500,000 to be able to connect that to storm.
I don't know if it's that much, we actually owe you an estimate on that.
Yeah, so, we've been investigating that, but it's going to be very expensive to correct that, that small area.
Anything else, Jeff?
I know, I know, Councilwoman Pinek's got a question, and I actually was hoping that Dan Wagner from the, from MDOT would answer the bridge question. But we had a progress meeting this morning. Essentially, there's, there's two critical paths to get that bridge open to traffic. One is the track and tread, which is where all the weight of the bridge span bears on and moves. One of those are out of tolerance, and it's not due to the new pieces, it's due to the original bridge has a little, little twist to it. So their expectation is this week, they're going to remove those parts, have them shipped off to be remilled, that should take a couple of days, but they think by the end of next week, they'll have those reinstalled and repaired. The other one is called a hinged walkway, and as the bridge moves up and down, it creates a very large opening in the sidewalk. And so, there's repairs and fabrication being made to those, and they expect those to be back and installed within a couple of weeks. They won't give me a date, but it sounds, it sounds fairly positive. And I told them if we're getting anywhere close to Fourth of July, we need to know, we need a, we need a plan to at least temporarily get traffic across there, so.
I saw the email, so I wasn't.
Oh, okay.
Anybody else? Thank you. Congratulations on your award.
Yeah.
Oh, can I ask, I'm sorry, can I ask, I wanted to ask you about the public restrooms. When is your schedule for cleaning those? And when does that, is like, they're only open through summer, spring, summer?
So of the, I think there were nine.
Yeah.
Public facilities, all nine of those are open May through October, and they get cleaned seven days a week. We bring in Parks guys on Saturday and Sunday to clean those. When we have holiday weekends and stuff, we'll actually come in twice and clean those daily, especially in the beach areas. So they're clean, usually they start in the morning and we'll finish, excuse me, finish that effort by lunch or soon after lunch.
They're like two people on a crew, or is it?
Yes. And then the only two that are open during the wintertime are the two that are downtown, so the one next to Trophies, and then the one at the City Marina. And we have electronic locks on those. They unlock in the morning, they lock at night, the police check them every night to make sure that they're locking. We have found that people who like to occupy them in the evenings have learned to bend the door jambs, have learned to bend the closures so that they will not lock, so we're, at least the police are alerting us to when that happens, and then we're trying to make repairs as quick as we can.
Do they lock at the same time every night?
Yes. They're programmed.
Okay, so there's not a way that we can kind of switch it up and?
Surprise you?
Yeah.
Surprise attack.
Maybe.
Okay, I didn't know how extensive that would be, because I think the main bathroom that everybody's having issue with is the one downtown. Okay.
And I'm anticipating that our beach ones will be very busy this summer since we've got our little awards there.
Yeah, so, so the beach ones are a little bit different, because we clean those, we give, we go through a cleaning in the morning, and then the concessionaire is responsible for maintaining those throughout the day.
Oh.
But after they close, then stuff happens all evening and till they're, they're closed at whatever it is, 11.
Right, okay.
But we make the first sweep, first thing in the morning through those.
All right, anybody else? Thank you. Citizens comment, this is an opportunity for citizens and attendants to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read.
Hi again, I'm Sammy Lucas-Gobitz from Manistee County Tourism Authority. I just wanted to thank everybody for voting for First Street Beach as Best Beach in Michigan. In case you haven't heard, we were up against 20 other beaches across the state, and came out the winner. Votes matter, and Manistee really turned out to vote and support our beaches. Manistee got a lot of press from it also, and it got a lot of people really excited about Manistee, Manistee beaches, all the great assets that we have here. But what also matters is the hard work of everybody who makes our beaches a great place to be. I mean, all of our beaches, but the Department of Public Works, since it's Love Fest today for them, but also our police and our fire department who keep the beaches safe, our Parks Commission, thank you to everyone, but also thank you to you for finding the funding to keep our beaches safe and clean and always updating it. I'm really excited about the strategic planning that's going into our beaches, and it's our competitive advantage here in Manistee is to have so much shoreline and beautiful beaches, but thank you for everything that you do for us. And we made all these great little bottles, I did ask the city manager for the sand first for permission, but these are actually beach sand. And I hope we win more awards, so we'll have to get more beach sand out there, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I don't want any of your dirty dirt though, but we're really excited about the summer ahead, and we're hopeful for a really good tourism season, so, and this certainly is a big deal for us. We're also buying advertising around it, so we're super excited to continue promoting our beaches, so thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Stafford at 275 First Street, I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm the new Economic Development Director with the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce. And just a little background on me, I am from the Metro Detroit area, just an hour north of Detroit, but I'm coming from White Cloud in Newago County, did a SEDOM Fellowship there for about a year. And, yeah, I'm really looking forward to get to know this community, to listen to this community, and, you know, I have a lot to learn from each and every one of you, and just to form my vision of Manistee and my understanding of Manistee, I'm going to turn to each and every one of you and all the community members I really come in contact with to kind of get a better understanding of Manistee. So really looking forward to be a part of this community, and, I mean, you really have something special here, you know, on the lakeshore, and kind of as Sammy said, there's so many unique assets that Manistee can continue to build on and continue to improve on and market for itself. And I'm just really grateful to be up here because I've always wanted to be in a lakeshore town, and, you know, now, now I'm finally here and having the chance to live in one and contribute to its prosperity, so I'm looking forward to the partnership with the city and to continue collaboration. You know, everybody I've met with the city, with Teresa and Bill, has just been very welcoming and opening, just open arms for me to come into this community, so looking forward to it, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Tom Riley. My wife and I own the Riverside Motel Marina on 520 Water Street, so I live quite far from here. I watch these meetings on YouTube, and I can tell you, on YouTube, this room looks a whole lot bigger. I just wanted to tell you that my two little dogs really appreciate all the work that was done in, on the dog park, and I think everything's just great. Guys do a fantastic job, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Gamble.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to welcome Andrew, we're looking forward to working with you, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, Jeff, and also Spicer for your presentations. I did want to mention, absolutely, I think, great timing with us winning Best Beach in Michigan, us doing the master plan, we're getting a lot of comments about, don't screw it up, which is appreciated too. I did want to say that we do have the surveys open for another month. It's available, you can link to it on the website, we also have it on Facebook, so just want to encourage the public to, have their voice heard, please fill out the survey, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I was not able to make the last council meeting, but Jeff just reminded me in his presentation about the spring cleanup event that happened on May 11th. I thought, as a part of the NRBC, I thought that was an absolute win. We had over 100 yards of waste that got compacted into, into the dump truck and hauled away that 125-ish community members brought on that day, and I thought, all of that material was probably going to end up in yards or was in yards, so that was awesome that city staff allowed us to, to put that event together with the recycling event. And I will speak to one exact person who came, I'm not going to name names, but there was someone who brought a trailer of 35 tires, six mattresses, and four couches that were all, I know for a fact, in the yard that got brought and recycled on that day. So just that one person was a win, but the whole event was a win, so thank you for allowing us to do that, so just want to say that.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of things, I wanted to thank the Chamber Leadership Team for the dog park improvements, it's amazing, if anybody hasn't been down there, I'd encourage you to go check it out. Jeff, thank you, residents emailed me and said, thank you for patching at the corner of Spruce and Bryant, they're really appreciative, so thank you. I did have a couple of people reach out, and I'm not sure if it's a DPW or if it would be a school concern, because it's that Sands Park, the field at Sands Park where they're doing T-ball. I think some people are kind of comparing that field to the improvements we did down on First Street, and they're like, that field needs some work. So in case you get some inquiries, I did ask them to reach out, because I wasn't sure. And then, the only other thing I had, just wondering, in the past, I thought there was a committee that was put together to kind of look at emergency response and hospital operations. Can we get an update on that? And just, I've had a lot of people reach out with rumors they're hearing and things that have been put in the paper in regards to hospital changes and things, so maybe we can get an update, and maybe that's something to that. Down the road, we could get working maybe together with the county more and having a joint session or something if needed?
We, and we did budget, and thank you, council, for regional study to help improve emergency response, and I think the hope is that the county, the hospitals, some other entities will be involved in that, and I think having some skin in the game of contributing to that study will help, but we do need to look at that regionally, and so.
Yeah, and I just know that some of it's services and some of it's other things, so it's kind of a broad spectrum where people's concerns are, so I just didn't know if there were any updates we could maybe get.
I can give you some, I know we are, the chief and I have, I think it's every two weeks a meeting with the hospital, so we can, tomorrow, so, yeah, we can give you another update. I don't, it's more, yeah, kind of tracking the trends with how often, you know, the transports are affecting, how much MMR has to go, so we are, we are looking at that, and we're kind of getting on the same page about the data right now, but, yeah, so I can get, we can get you an update.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kabowski?
Yeah, I was at the Fifth Avenue Beach on Saturday, and Spicer had a good, a lot of good ideas, they had them all on boards, you could put your little sticky thing on to whatever project you liked. It was really neat, it was pretty good, I appreciated it. I'm glad a lot of people showed up after I left, they must not want to be there, so. But it was really nice, I wish more people would have showed up. Also, Bill, are we doing anything with the paper trailer and that plastic trailer now that they're closing for sure?
So with the school closing, I did reach out to PCA to see what their intent was, the program was for, is for schools, so I had a couple calls with them, I have a call with an individual, I believe her name's Lindsay, with PCA, so I didn't get to connect with her today. with her today, but I do think my, the initial understanding was they were gonna keep it there for the interim, but I do have a, I do think with the school being closed, we're gonna have issues there, so.
Who's gonna pack that trailer, I mean, they throw everything in the barn.
Yeah, and my understanding is, I don't think PCA wants to commit labor to it, I don't want to commit our labor to it necessarily, so I think it's kind of a challenging location for us with it being off thirty-one and kind of hidden and it being constantly open, so I am pushing Republic for a quote for curbside since we're gonna eventually have to go to that, but, yeah, we're kind of seeing how it goes the next couple of weeks, but I.
They're gonna really pack those trailers up. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bachman.
Just two updates I'm looking forward to, one, I thought we were gonna get one on the Gateway Project, I haven't heard anything on that, and number two is that social, Lakeside Social Club was supposed to get done, there's nothing but blight up there now, I don't know, is an eyesore on the highway, either needs to come down, I need to solve that, I'd be curious what, if you get in next week or so, find out what's happening with either one of those projects, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, and I can, I was gonna send out the Gateway update on Friday, there is some more issues with the remediation of the soil there, but they are looking to kind of gather capital for that project. I don't have anything on the Lakeside Social, I can look into that.
Okay, it's an eyesore for sure, thank you.
Just a half a dozen things, just kidding. Mr. McCula, isn't summer a lot more fun than winter when it comes to your job?
It looks better.
Yes, yep, the Love Fest continues, great work, I love seeing, you know, all the things going on, it's just, it's fantastic, especially in the mornings, and the guys out doing what they need to do and just kind of motoring away, it's great to see. Sammy, don't sell yourself short on the things you're doing here, again, Love Fest, you are doing fantastic things for this community and we are so lucky to have you, you cannot leave. And last, Mr. Riley, I believe it is, when you bought Lakeside or the Riverside Motel, I knew it for other reasons as I was the commander of the drug team. I've seen consistent improvement in that area and from the brand-new pool that was refaced last year to the painting, I drive by there pretty much every day in the, you know, at least in the summertime and you and your wife have done a fantastic job with that and, you know, thank you, that's the type of investment we need in the community, people that are gonna bring in tourism plus vested interest, so thank you. You're welcome, sir.
Slumber.
Well, I guess we should continue the Love Fest here, so I as well am so excited that we're the best beach in Michigan, that is really exciting, I've been telling all my friends in Grand Rapids, you gotta come here, so thank you for all the efforts being put there, everyone who voted for it, that's awesome, awesome. I wanted to thank the DPW for helping out at Lake, the Lighthouse Park, for our first graders who are going down there, making sure that their beehives were gone and all that kind of good stuff, so thank you for helping with that. I also wanted to thank the Police Department, Chief Glass, thank you for accepting all of us in your, in this vicinity here with Crime Dog and sharing safe water rules and things, that was a really exciting thing for all of our kids and it was really well-received, so thank you very much for that. And the only other thing was the Gateway, it sounds like you're gonna send us a date on that, so we're all good, thank you.
Okay, I just have a couple of things, which is what everybody else already said, because I go last, so Sammy, thank you for all your work on getting us to Best Beach in Michigan. I hope that that raises the bar for everything else that we do and everybody puts in just a little bit more effort. Chief Glass, in your department, I think you're doing an amazing job, the bridge being out, I know every time somebody says "bridge," like, everybody like tenses up because it's ridiculous, but I think that there was an accident last week and I think you guys were on top of it and it was super smooth, like you've got it down, so thank you. Heather, welcome back, Laura did a great job while you were gone, I only called her Heather twice, I think she's happy to not sit up here, so with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.